I call the order of a regular meeting, Goodyear City Council, 26 June 2006. Start with a pledge of allegiance and invocation by Councilmember Antoniak.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me if you wish. Dear Heavenly Father, please give us the guidance this evening to make decisions that are wise and constructive for the city of Goodyear and the residents that we serve on a daily basis. Please look over our public safety, men and women, as they go about their daily business on the streets of the city of Goodyear, as well as anybody else that does. Give our employees good fortune, their families good fortune, as well as those serving us overseas, and the military and armed services look over them. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you. All council members are in attendance this evening. We do have minutes, draft minutes of a regular meeting held on June 12th, and it's open for review and approval by the council. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll approve the minutes for filing. There are no expenditures to ratify. We're now at Communications. Are there any commendations or presentations by the public? A member of the public would like to present? Okay, council, any commendations or presentations? Okay, we'll move to councilmember's report on current events.
Well, along with several other councilpeople we attended today, the West Valley Alliance meetings, and I think it was Councilman Scott and Councilwoman Holland and myself. We each went to different meetings, but I happened to go on the one that was sharing facilities for parks, recreation, and schools through IGAs. And it seems to be all the interest in all the cities, and it's amazing how many resources there are throughout our cities to bring together that will be an advantage for all citizens, all schools, for all different activities. And I know that Brian has told me we're very active on that. We've already had a work session on it. The other thing is, I just want to throw out a compliment. I was at, on the Van Buren meeting, Reconstruction of Van Buren, and we have two outstanding employees who gave a presentation about what the improvements we're making on Van Buren, and it's a difficult, always a difficult time, because you have homeowners there that are very concerned about their daily life while we're in the process of constructing this road. So there were some, probably some heated statements and some concerned people, and David Ramirez and Al Gonzalez just brought that group together. They controlled themselves, they acted in such a friendly manner that the people left very satisfied in what the city of Goodyear is doing, and I really appreciate, and we all appreciate having such a great staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that we had our bi-monthly meeting, the Historic Goodyear Alliance, and it was very constructive. There were some complaints about police protection, but that was resolved following the meeting. Other than that, everything is moving along in Historic Goodyear as we plan. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Holland.
I'd like to also give kudos to our city staff people at the meeting, for the meeting this past week. They were just very, very professional and tried to answer all the questions, and really appreciate their professionalism. Also, just to let you know that I did get a telephone call from the engineering group at Lockheed Martin, and they'd like to have me come in and speak to them about my technical background, some of my space station experiences, and also what it's like to be on the city council in the city of Goodyear when it's growing as fast as it is. So I'm looking forward to that.
Okay, I just have one item. For those here who are going to the Desert Peaks Awards on Wednesday, that's a biannual MAG event in which communities throughout this part of the state vie for four or five different awards. And we were vying for one in the public-private partnership. The subject was a relationship that we've generated effectively with the developers that proved successful and certainly assisted Luke in its preservation efforts, i.e. the developers along the southern corridor. But I did find out that we did not win, so I don't want anybody going there thinking that they're ready to salute a winner. We may do that, but it won't be us. The one that won certainly was a great competitor, and that was TGen, so a pretty tough competition. But compliments to all of us for vying and being in the finals for that particular public-private partnership. And the Desert Peaks will proceed, I think, 5:30 Wednesday night.
Mayor, if we're there at that event, do we also witness another vote that you might be a winner in?
Right.
Yeah. For those of you that don't know, Mayor Kavanaugh is running unopposed for chairmanship of American Association of Governments, and so I think we're 48 hours in advance of a successful vote, hopefully, of the mayor of Goodyear being the chairman of MAC. Thank you.
City manager's summary of current events and reports.
The only one we have to share today, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is that the legislature went home. And so we're not, we're safe for a while. And later in the presentation, you'll see some of the consequences of their activities, so.
It's mine, not mine, as it might be. Okay, thank you. We'll now move to opportunity for any citizen to comment, express their views on any subject which is not on this evening's agenda. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, and I'll ask the clerk to read the items by title only, and before she does that, I've been told that Consent Item 8K, the Litchfield Park IGA for the sharing of court facility use, has been postponed until July 10th, so 8K is removed. D?
Item 8A, award of professional services contract in the amount of $249,989 to Logan Simpson Design Incorporated for a citywide parks master plan. A2, award of professional services contract in the amount of $90,073 to Logan Simpson Design, Inc., for the design of a neighborhood park improvement. Item B, council will consider approving an increase in our municipal automobile comprehensive and collision deductibles from $250 and $500 respectively to a $1,000 deductible for each. Item 2, council will consider approving a change in our policy renewal date from August 27th to June 30th. Item C, council will consider approving the retirement health savings plan for the city of Goodyear employees. D, council will consider ratifying the police department application for grant funds in the amount of $5,581 for the purchase of AlcoCensor FST portable breath test instruments, and authorize the city manager and chief of police to sign all documents concerning the grant. Item E, council will consider approving a request from Ed Feltenberg, representing Oklahoma Management Group LLC, for a Series 12 liquor license for Hilltop Pizzeria, located at 17750 West Elliot Road, Suite F. Item F, council will consider adopting Resolution 061048, authorizing the mayor to execute an IGA with the city of Phoenix to serve as a municipal tax hearing office that will hear all reviews of petitions for hearing or redetermination under the Model City Tax Code for cities and towns. G, council will consider authorizing staff to initiate the annexation of 78.81 acres of land generally located at the southeast corner of Lower Buckeye and Citrus Roads, known as Citrus Ridge. H, council will consider accepting the dedication of sewer line easements and temporary construction easements for the construction of a sewer trunk line, which easements are generally located south of Elwood Street, north of the Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way, along 159th Avenue alignment. Item I, council will consider adopting Ordinance 061010, amending Section 5.1 of the Engineering Design Standards and Policy Manual adopted by Ordinance Number 97-587, and Series 3300 of the Supplemental Standard Details for Public Works Construction, adopted by Ordinance Number 97588 by amending Section 5.1 and the Series 3300 details, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Item J, council will consider approving an amendment to an existing use permit for a mini-storage facility to allow the addition of a dwelling for a caretaker on a 3.34 acre parcel within the general commercial district generally located 150 feet north of Van Buren Street and 400 feet west of Palo Verde Drive in the central square mixed-use commercial center, subject to stipulations. K, council will consider adopting Resolution 061049, authorizing the mayor to execute, that item is being moved to July 10th. Item L, council will consider approving a request from Claire Abel, agent representing Walmart Neighborhood Market, Number 3604, for a new Series 9 liquor license located at 14200 West Indian School Road. Item M, council will consider approving the final plat for parcel 97 of Estrella Mountain Ranch Golf Village subdividing approximately 20.4 acres into 60 lots, generally located north of West Star Drive and about one mile west of the Estrella Parkway Terminus, subject to stipulations. N, council will consider approving the final plat for parcel 98 of Estrella Mountain Ranch Golf Village subdividing approximately 25.5 acres into 75 lots, generally located north of West Star Drive and about one mile west of the Estrella Parkway Terminus, subject to stipulations. Item O, council will consider approving professional services agreement between the lead agency for WSCAF, City of Goodyear, Arizona, and Brown &amp; Caldwell for implementation of the WSCAF's general plan, and to further authorize the city manager or his designee to execute this agreement. Item P, council will consider approving a memorandum of understanding to allow city staff to participate in negotiations with Adman Water Company for delivery of potable water to the city of Goodyear.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, then. I'd ask someone on council would make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through J and 8L through P. So, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier in a second, from Councilmember Antoniak. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the business part of our agenda, and when we get through the public hearing on D, we'll adjourn the regular meeting and go into a special meeting, and then after taking that for one subject, we'll return to the regular meeting. of Goodyear Sales Tax Code, and it looks like Joe Prizzoli will do that staff presentation. I'll open the public hearing.
Mayor, council, before I get started with the presentation, for those of you who have not had the pleasure to meet Marvin Carter, he's our sales tax auditor who has the face that usually been out there working with the public. In fact, on the dais there, you'll see a packet. Through the help of the Public Information Office, Dan Marvin, they've worked on producing brochures for the taxpayers, as well as charts. We at the city, especially in the tax department, are trying to emphasize customer service, the actual educational part, because to be honest with you, we both win when the business realizes what their tax liabilities are. So as a result, Marvin's been spending time out there among the public, developing these brochures, developing rates in both English and Spanish, as you noticed, and as a result, it's paying off. They're actually calling him now when they have tax questions. So again, since it's a pass-through tax, it really benefits when they know what they're supposed to collect. So again, we emphasize the customer service. Maybe you're not sure a traditional tax policy, but that's what we specialize, we're proud of doing that. So again, if you hear of anybody out there that needs any help along that, Marvin is the individual you want them to call. Okay? With that, on these changes, these changes are the direct result of some state legislation and Model City Tax Code committee recommendations. Every year, they go through this process of trying to align the Model City Tax Code. In fact, the League of Cities takes the lead on this, and right now is recommending all cities adopt these changes. They have no significant revenue impact, and really, we're preempted on some of it when it comes to the state legislation. So again, I don't know what else to add to that, except to say if there's any questions from council, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Okay, I have Marvin Carter will do it. Are you satisfied, or is that, Joe, you're doing it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution 061050, adopting resolution declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled the 2006 Amendments to the Tax Code of the City of Goodyear.
Okay, thank you. Ask for motion.
Mr. Mayor, will the council adopt the amendments to the City of Goodyear Sales Tax Code?
Second.
Okay, and that's Resolution 06...
061050.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Souza in a second, from Councilmember Lord. It's open for discussion. Ask for roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll now... Okay, now I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance 061011, adopting ordinance relating to the privileged license tax, adopting the 2006 Amendments to the Tax Code of the City of Goodyear by reference, establishing an effective date, providing for severability, and providing penalties for violations.
Could I have a motion, please?
I move we adopt Ordinance 061011 as read by the city clerk.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Lord, and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. It's open for discussion. Okay, seeing none, I'll call for, ask for roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe. Okay, we'll now move to a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution and ordinance relating to city water and sewer services. I'll open the public hearing, and Dave, you got it? Dave Iwatski?
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. Last month, you issued a notification of intent to raise water and sewer rates, as well as full-cost recovery fees, and to do so utilizing resolutions as opposed to changing various provisions of the city code every time we had a fee or rate change. The publication of the ordinance, the resolution, all the rates and fees appeared in the May 26, 2006 edition of the West Valley View. Public hearing date was set for tonight under the requirements of Arizona state law. The three-year water and sewer rate increases were first implemented, adopted, and implemented in October of 2005 pursuant to the recommendations received from our rates consultant, Black &amp; Veatch. The study was completed in July 2005. You also adopted those pursuant to the unanimous vote of the Citizens' Water and Sewer Rates Committee. In addition, city staff began analyzing the service charges and user fees rates that were adopted the last time in October of 2004 pursuant to the Management Services Institute Report. The Black &amp; Veatch Water and Wastewater Rate Review Study, the Management Services Institute Report, and the City of Goodyear Staff Report cumulatively provide the financial evaluations and justifications to recommend that these new fees for services also be adopted. When this process began, the mayor and council gave four public policy direction as to all analysis of future rates and fees. One, that growth pays for growth. Two, that water and sewer rate increases will lead to utility financial self-sufficiency in a timely manner. Three, that there will be full-cost recovery for services and products provided by the city. And four, that rates be implemented that encourage water conservation. And as an adjunct to that fourth public policy direction, you also stated that you wanted us to work towards 100% reuse of our affluent, thus saving potable supplies. We feel confident that the rates and fees now before you accomplish these four public policy directives, our new rates and fees also represent competitive price comparisons with other municipal providers in the valley. Obviously, I'm here to answer any questions or respond to any comments from mayor, council, and our citizens, customers, and rate payers. Mayor, I guess I need your direction. You all had received the rates package with the 11 tables. I would ask if you want, we can put those up one table at a time on Elmo, but I'll take your direction.
How's the council feel about that?
I don't need it.
Do you do need it?
Yeah. I think it's advantageous. I'm imagining there's...
We got a couple that would like to see it, at least a couple, so.
Folks in the room that probably want to see it.
Okay, good.
Or maybe helpful.
Yes, Dave?
Assuming...
Okay, Mayor Kelsey? Now, I am Elmo challenged, so if anybody wants to come up and help me, I'd sure appreciate it. Just tickle the zoom button.
He's on the way.
Mayor, council, this is for the water rates within the city limits. You can see by tier the existing water rates based on, first tier is 0 to 8,000 gallons. That initial rate per thousand gallons, currently $1.46. This, the increase that was passed in October, it was a three-year increase, so we had 20%, 15%, 5% on water, 20%, 10%, and zero rate increase for wastewater. The changes are before you. The other change is that we added a fourth tier of 30,000 gallons and over. This is for the highest users, and once again, keeping the conservation ethic in mind, we added a fourth tier. The city did not have one until last October. You also see the rates for the commercial water as well. The base charges, depending on meter size, and we had listed all of those back in October, Councilmember Antoniak had asked why we didn't have fee charges for anything in excess of two inches, because the code read two inches and above. So we've itemized those to reflect the new and improved Goodyear. We have new industrial and commercial users, and they normally use a larger meter. So we've itemized the three-inch, four-inch, and six-inch meter by type.
David, south of I-10, you said in the city of Goodyear?
I'm sorry?
South of I-10 versus in the city of Goodyear.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not only am I Elmo challenged, my hearing is now going. Stephen, Cleveland wanted me to explain service area, for those of you who may not be aware. North of I-10, most of that service area within the incorporated city boundaries of Goodyear is serviced by Lipsco, the Litchfield Park Service Company. That is the subsidiary water company of Algonquin Power headquartered in Toronto, Canada. Also, we have five sections of land where the water service is provided by Arizona American Water Company, and then a slight sliver of land immediately south of I-10 that's serviced by Arizona Water Company. Now, these are private utilities. Their rates and their operations, their construction is governed by the Arizona Corporation Commission. We have little, if any, influence or governance over a private utility. South of I-10, to the, for the entire exterior boundaries of the city, the city of Goodyear is responsible for water and wastewater. We also have...
Dave, we have a question.
It's Goodyear.
Mayor, vice mayor, I'm sorry.
It's wise that you bring that up, because there have been several emails that have come through complaining about, well, why hasn't folks north of I-10 been affected by these rates? And you've given the answer to that. I know I've had several emails and maybe two letters that communicated with me on that subject, so I hope that the newspaper will pick this up again, showing that there are two types of services, water services, in the city of Goodyear. One is owned by the city, south of I-10, and north by Lipsco.
Lipsco and Arizona American. Mayor, vice mayor, yes?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
These are the water rates outside the city limits, but within incorporated limits of another municipality. We do have several service areas that we serve. Once again, you can see that the tiers have been changed in all of them to now reflect four tiers, and the percentage increases also apply at that same rate. The base charge, once again, is premised on the size of meter. The next chart is water rates outside city limits and outside the incorporated limits of another municipality, County Islands. Once again, I don't want to beat this horse to death, but you can see the four tiers, residential and commercial, as well as the base rate based on meter size. These are the sewer rates within the city limit. Now, keep in mind that in October, you passed a 20, 10, and 0, so we have the current rates and next year's increase. The percentage increase is reflected. You see the base charge, again, based on meter size, and then there's a volume charge of the $2.72 currently being raised to $3 per thousand gallons. Same is true of our commercial users. Sewer rates outside the city limits, within incorporated limits of a municipality, again, this is identical for the sewer side as it was on the water side in terms of that customer base. This reflects current rate, the proposed increase, the volume charges, and base charges based on meter size. Sewer rates outside of the city, outside of incorporated limits of another municipality, once again, these are our county... once again, these are County Islands. Several of the council members wanted to know what the chronology of rate increases was in water and sewer. And based on our team research, we go back to our October of 1988, and this kind of gives you a flavor as to when new rates were implemented, water and sewer, and what those percentage and dollar increases were. I might add, during this entire process, there was an excellent American Water Works Association article that was provided in your packet, and based on utilities, municipal utilities nationwide, they tried to come up with some sort of methodology in terms of what appropriate pricing for water and sewer would be. And based on the committee comprised of experts throughout various regions of the country, it was noted that 1.5% of median household income is representative of water and sewer rates. If you take a look at our city, we've got a $56,000 median income. Those monthly charges should be in the neighborhood of $70. We are, I think, right on the button, and in most cases, depending on your use, we are actually below that recommended methodology. But you can see October '88, October '90, June of '94, October of '98, and the last, December of 2001, and October of 2005. In terms of customer service fees, we had fees that either missed the mark in terms of not providing for full cost recovery, and there were new fees that were adopted because of the city providing its level of customer service to our customers. What we did in the publications is itemize the current fees and where in the city code they appear, and then the proposed fees. And it would be appropriate at this time to let the mayor and council and our citizens know that your staff committee was comprised of folks from Water Resources, our city attorney's office, our finance department, and our customer service line folks. So there was a lot of different disciplines that were represented, and an awful lot of time and energy spent in terms of getting this right. Next is the water and sewer-related information, the proposed meter prices. What this chart shows you is the actual market value of the various meters, the meter sizes, and the meter types. There is no--the best way I can describe this is this is full cost recovery in its purest form. We take what the meter costs, and that's what we bill. We don't add on any administrative fee or any kind of what people might perceive or conceive as a profit. We're not in the profit-making business. Jerry Postima, who is very instrumental on our team, is here if you have any specific questions as to those meters, but he does a great job of negotiating the best possible meter prices that we can get.
Those are new meters.
Those are new meters.
Not replacement. Nobody gets charged for a replacement.
Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, that is correct.
So that goes into the price of a new house. Is that right?
Mayor, correct.
Mayor?
Yes.
David, does this include the automated meter reading? All these meters are set up to do that, so we don't have to go in and retrofit later?
Mayor, Councilmember Holland, the Water Resources and the Finance folks are doing the meter--what do you call it, Jerry?
Radio read system.
The radio read system, correct. That is inclusive in these recommendations.
Okay, so they're in the meters when we put them in the ground?
Mayor, Councilmember Holland, yes. Once again, this is meter information in terms of our deposits. In this case, we never had a deposit for a meter, setting fee, and then the monthly user charge. One of the other additional--well, there's two additional benefits with this ordinance and resolution and the recommendations before you besides the rates and fees is, number one, we have established a 70% of the Tier 2 water rate as our effluent pricing. This encourages the use of effluent for landscape irrigation, construction water, dust control, et cetera. The other thing is we have experienced, unfortunately, a pretty significant amount of water theft throughout the city. In other words, people that don't get a meter or don't work with the city in terms of making arrangements to purchase water for construction-related purposes or dust control. This new ordinance is becoming extremely more aggressive in terms of addressing that problem, and there's a significant deterrence, so we need to get the word out that that kind of water theft practice is going to stop. These are the standard labor and equipment rates that we are recommending, and once again, the customer service, the finance, and the Water Resources team put these together based on standards in the industry and what we think are reasonable costs of our labor and our equipment at a particular job site. If I go to my auto mechanic, I don't expect him or her to change my oil at no cost. So these, once again, are something that covers as comprehensive an activities list for all of these various labor and equipment charges as we can think of. If our way of doing business changes in the future, obviously, if there's new levels of service that we are going to provide to our customer base, those will be amended at some time in the future. And then lastly, we have the Water Resources backflow labor rates. Again, to make sure that our system is safe, city code requires backflow preventers installed, maintained. This reflects, once again, what is reflective of industrial practice and what we in the city here feel is a fair rate of our actual cost of delivering that service. Mayor, that's all I have. Mayor, council members, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the VAAS and make myself available to respond to any public comments or attempt to answer questions from our customers. Okay, well, we'll continue with the public hearing. And now it's opportunity for anyone from the public to make a comment.
Mr. Mayor, we have a request from Blake Wold.
Could you say that, Blake?
Wold, W-O-L-D.
Mr. Wold?
Maybe I'm not--there were some people.
Seattle Hall?
Would you check, Dave, see if he's out there? Blake Wold. Blake Wold? Any other?
No.
Okay.
Gary Gelsner, 14971 West Pennsyl Avenue in Goodyear. Mayor and council, in previous budget presentations and in the next two items that you're going to be taking up at this council meeting, you're going to basically be subsidizing the water, sewer, and sanitation departments to in excess of $2 million out of the general fund revenues. And based on what you did last council meeting where you approved a new garbage service and increased the rates, commensurately with the cost of living, et cetera, the sanitation service will be almost at a break-even point except for administrative costs. And in reading through the COAC that was presented on the website today, one of the things that I looked at the rates, I saw the 20% rate that we increased the water and sewer rates, and the 15% rate proposed, and the 5% rate for 2007 and 2008, and my question really is, at the end of 2008, will we, will all three, will water and sewer be essentially an enterprise fund and break even? And I would like, I would hope that Finance and the Water Commission and, you know, Councilmember Antoniak, who was on that commission, I'm sure they've asked that question, except the answer to this question has never been in any kind of written form. And I think the calculations are reasonably simple based on the number of new houses that will come into Goodyear over 2006, 2007, 2008 period, and that we can find out whether the general fund will continue to subsidize these two departments. And that's my request, and I would hope that, you know, sometime in the next few months, we would be able to see that answer. Thank you.
Mayor, just clarity real quick. I was on the trash and recycling committee, not on a water committee. Okay, I want clarity of the public comment, so I was not on a water committee. I have not seen these before they came to the dives.
A little more humble pie.
Sorry, Mayor. Based on current projections we have for the next two years through the end of 2008, Dave, would you answer that question based on the projection and make sure that's in the minutes? Mayor, council members, Mr. Gelsner, that was the intent of that water and sewer rate study that Black &amp; Beach conducted. It's the best available information that we have. The two key components, obviously, are growth rate and whatever that magic number happens to be, if it's 15, 16, 18, 20, that will be an indicator, as well as construction costs, which we all know have gone up. So those were addressed, an inflationary factor was applied. Was it enough? We'll see. But based on the data that we had at that time, but rates are always a work in progress. We will do everything that we can in terms of spending taxpayers' money and customer money wisely to meet all the goals and objectives. But as of today, I would say that we can meet that goal. Certainly, the intent will work toward it. If not, we will be back. There's, the reality is, I don't know what the cost of concrete is going to be next month, much less in 2008. I don't know what the cost of gasoline is going to be next month, much less 2008. So we were reasonable, we were responsive, and a lot of data was evaluated and analyzed. Thank you. Councilmember Souza, did you follow up on that?
I'm just saying, somewhere along the line, we're told that these increases would cushion the general fund by the amount of money that we're going, we've been taking away from the general fund to pay for the delinquencies in the income for the water system. And it seems to me that somewhere along the line, I heard something about two and a half, two years or two and a half years, that we were able to do away with that, going into the general fund to offset these losses.
Mayor, Councilmember Souza, it's the rate, the rate study, the water and sewer rate study that was conducted. That projection was to be sustainable and self-sustaining in three years. There was a discussion, and what you had heard was the recommendation from some of our citizens, the Citizens Water and Wastewater Rate Committee, where they were suggesting that in that fourth year, fifth year, sixth year, the out-years after you were at sustainable and being financially sound, or excuse me, financially self-sufficient, were financially sound, or at least I would hope so, that then in that fourth or fifth year, you would look at another potential rate increase where some of that enterprise fund could make reimbursements back to the general fund. So I believe that's where you heard it from. It was not part of a staff report, it was not part of the Black &amp; Beach report, but I do recall that that statement was made.
Well, following up on Mr. Gelsner's question, okay, then it would appear for the last eight years, we've been going into the general fund to offset the loss of income in the water, in the water company, and, or the water service. And we still haven't reached a reconciling point on this issue. And it's a concern for the folks who live north of I-10, because basically, we are being charged, really, double. Number one in taxes and number one in water rates that we're paying for Lipsco. And we're getting no services out of the taxes that we're paying to the city for the services that we're not receiving.
Mayor, Councilmember Souza, you're correct. And when you look at the chronology of the water and sewer rate increases going back to 1988, my judgment, and I wasn't here with the city, but I've worked with and for a lot of your staff, it's always difficult to project out what, you know, how much is enough in terms of rate increases. Probably came up short on some of those prior decisions, but it goes back a long way. What we want to do is get it right, as I said, this time around, to make sure that this water and sewer fund is self-sufficient, to be run like the utility that it's intended to be run like.
Well, five years, 5% in '08. The increase now plus 5% in '08, then what you're saying is not going to do it.
I don't think he's saying that. I think, in view of the current data, we expect to be self-sufficient in two years in our enterprise funds. Is that a correct statement? Mayor, that's what was in the report, and I've got to stand by that report. We still have, this is a work in progress, and, you know, again, in response to Mr. Gelsner, we within the Water Resources Department have an obligation to look at the actual cost of service and what you all decide in terms of your capital improvement program, what your priorities for water and wastewater are, and to have rates in place that pay for that infrastructure. And when we walk through this with our citizens committee, the big-ticket items that are going to hit us, brine management, brine concentrate disposal, huge ticket item, arsenic treatment, we now have a new federal standard as of January of this year. We went from 50 parts to 10 parts. That has, every, so that environmental compliance, that regulatory requirement has to be dealt with, and it costs money. We have new conservation requirements that are going to be in place as far as the upcoming fourth management plan under provisions of the Arizona Groundwater Management Act. All of these things we put into the mix. But this is going to, I'll be honest, there's no other way I can tell it. This is going to be a work in progress, and it all depends on the CIP, the projects that we need, and the cost of delivering service. we need, and the cost of delivering service. The cost is the cost. We have no profit motive. We have, if, if this council, as a matter of public policy, wants to have the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund reimburse the general fund, that is a public policy question, and we will take our marching orders accordingly.
The information that you provided you with, the Water Committee was, they knew about these?
Mayor, Councilmember Souza, absolutely.
Okay, now, I'm not satisfied, but what can I do?
Vice Mayor?
If I may, I think something that warrants explaining to the public, and that is the difference, or I should say the rationale for the increase in rates. So that we have an understanding that it isn't because of the enormous growth that all these rate increases are coming, but because of the other things. In other words, the separation of these costs are because of, of new construction and new housing. So that the people who've been here for years and years don't realize in the final end that this, that they're paying for the fact that new, that we have an explosion in, in population. So I think it would help if you could explain the difference in the costs for, what's paying for new population, new residential homes, and those costs that have to be, that cause raise in rates for everyone due to other issues. And you mentioned a couple of those, and there are more.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cavalier, that's exactly the point. The, the infrastructure-related kinds of things, the CIP-related budget items, that's, that is to be paid for. Growth pays for growth per the public policy that you've, you've given us direction on. Those are covered with the development fees, both the water development, the wastewater development, the water resources fee, and, and the reuse fee. That's development-related. What I'm referring to in terms of your weight, your, your rates and fees, is the actual cost of delivering customer service. What does it take, that man or woman, to go and turn on or repair that meter? Regardless of whether you've been here 10 years or you've just been here 10 days, there is a cost involved. That's as to the fee structure. In terms of your water and sewer rates, it is the cost of operating the system, the personnel that it takes, the, the salary and benefits package, the, the fuel, the, the fixed cost, the variable cost of day-to-day operations to deliver that service. That's what's covered in, in your water and sewer fees. And it is a distinction I should have made, I apologize.
I was going to say, just, I mean, as well as brine management and arsenic treatment and new federal standards that are, that are passed down. I mean, you all know I worked for a water company for six months. We had places that had mill growth that were experiencing 100% increase just because of the arsenic treatment standards that have to be employed. So it's, the, the federal standard is a very, very expensive standard to meet and a very, very costly one, as we all know, we've walked toward, toward the system.
Question on that, are we?
No, we aren't on the.
You're on a public hearing, so I don't want to.
I know.
This is a follow-up to Mr. Gelsner's comment, what you did.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back to the public hearing, and are there any further comments from the public? Sir? Sir, would you come to the podium?
My name is Gerald Jern, I live at 618 Bemere, South Interstate 10. I was just observing the rates here a little bit, or when he had them up on the board, and I noticed that the commercial rates and the residential rates, the tiers were different, and I just wondered an explanation as to why. For example, the commercial rates, I think was, the first tier was like 0 to 40,000 gallons, whereas the residential was like 0 to 8,000.
Yes.
And it was, it was the same, same fee for 1,000 gallons. And I just wanted to know why, why there was a difference.
Okay, Dave?
Thank you.
Goodbye, Mayor, I will answer that question. Let me dig real quick. The differential, Mayor, is due to the fact that commercial and industrial use, for the most part, generates a lot more wear and tear on the system, given the fact that you're using those incredibly large volumes of water. And when we look back at what the commercial rate had been historically, the, those gallonages from 0 to 40, 40 to 100,000, those were the ones that, that we maintained at, at that base rate. But they, they have larger, larger meter sizes and volumetrically, it's a matter of just putting that much more service on the system or for the system. Mayor, if I'm not being responsive, I would be happy to meet with that individual and get the answer that, that he deserves.
I, I assume the individual's concerned that on a per-gallon basis, the residential's paying more, is that correct?
I think you just explained the service charge, not the per-gallon. 0 to 8,000 gallons, it's what? Right.
A dollar forty-six per 1,000.
And you, for 8,000, and then you can go to 40,000 and pay a buck forty-six on the other, is that your point, or is that your concern?
Commercial water can go 0 to 40,000 gallons and pay a buck forty-six for.
Pay, pay the same rate. I understand his question, Mayor. I, I need to get him an answer.
Well, I, I don't think there's any reason to criticize here, and I, I found it responsive. And if, the fact is, the meter costs are greater for the commercial, is that correct? In fact, significantly greater.
Yes, sir. Mayor, that is correct.
But we can certainly respond to this gentleman, and, and I forgot to ask, Jern, why don't we take your names and phone numbers, and we'll call you, is that all right?
I'll be happy to give you my business card. It's a good question.
No, I think you call them, if that's okay. I assume this, is this sort of standard throughout the Valley, this type of thing?
Mayor, we, yeah, we did an analysis of, of our sister cities, and came up with some cost comparisons as, as to the residential rates and, and commercial rates both.
But, I mean, is it, is it customary that you have many more gallons within the first tier for commercial than you would in residential? Is that correct?
Mayor, that's a.
That is correct.
That is.
And is it also customary that it be the same rate? That is a question.
Cities handle it differently, and, and again, all I can say is that historically, that, that was, that was our gallonage that, that we used, that, that we thought was, that we thought was reasonable, and I, I need to, to get the explanation.
And it's also reflective of our desire to have economic development, too, and not to turn people off from wanting to come to the town because of the price of water. Councilmember Antoniak, you look like you want to add to this?
I will when we get done with the public hearing.
Okay. So you'll respond to the questions in writing, is that correct?
Mayor, I will respond to the questions in writing.
Okay.
I would be prepared to answer more questions about it in a few minutes.
What do you mean by that?
I mean, I don't want, you, you're directing a public hearing, and you, I mean, I'm just saying the subject matter may not be done, and maybe us on the dials want to ask the same question.
Okay, sir, we'll get back to you then, is that all right? Are there any other comments or questions from the public? And it's preferable if you give a, a card to the clerk. Do you have any more cards?
No.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Come to the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Judy Adams, and I live at 9803 South 182nd Drive in Goodyear. And I'm, I'm new to the Valley, I've only been living here 11 months, and was just curious with the water, I had no idea that the city of Goodyear had different suppliers, whereas if you live north of the 10, you're getting your water from a different source, and I guess that can create some difficulty, because here, living south of the 10, I'm thinking, wow, I'm going to have pretty expensive water rates, and those people up in Pebble Creek are, you know, maybe their water's cheaper because they have a different supplier, and I don't know if that's, will be correct or not after the new rates are implemented. But I guess I wanted to comment on the tiered water billing. Is this new, will this be new for Goodyear?
I don't believe so.
The tiered water?
I think there's an additional tier, is that correct, David?
I haven't noticed on my water bill that it shows the different amounts, because I moved here from Colorado, and I will tell you that a lot of municipalities in Colorado were using tiered water billing, and one of the main reasons they were doing that was to encourage consumers to conserve, but they've all, except there's, I think there's one city left in Colorado that's still using tiered water billing, pretty much they've abandoned it. Because the problem with tiered water billing, as far as conservation goes, is you can have a tiny house and a small lot and be very wasteful with your water, but because you have a small lot and a small house, you're still coming in that first 0 to 8,000 gallons. Whereas someone who has a large lot, and even with zero escaping, you know, watering their plants, is penalized for that. Because even if they're conserving and doing a great job conserving, it's penalized because they're being bumped up into the next, or second, or third, or fourth tier. So as a method of conversation, conservation, tiered water billing isn't always successful.
Okay.
And I want to say one other thing about that. I mean, a gallon of water costs what a gallon of water costs, and people should be billed for their usage. You know, you can't, unless you're going to make a lot, and, which, which is why this method has been abandoned, and most of the cities in Colorado were using it, because a lot of consumers came forward and said, this isn't fair, I've got a large lot and I'm conserving, but I'm being penalized, so.
Yeah, I, I think the purpose in this tier system is exactly conservation, which is in opposition to your point. But David, would you respond and? Would you go over the rationale for tiers? And then, ma'am, you had another question to start with?
No, I, I, it's not that, it's just that, you know, like I said, you could, you could be very wasteful with your water, but because you have a little tiny lot parcel, but you're still coming under that 8,000 gallons, you're getting to pay that cheap rate for your water, even though you could be being careless, and whereas someone who has a large lot and is being very conservative with their water, but because they have a large lot and they're using their water, and it bumps them up into that second, third, or fourth tier, they're, they're paying a lot more for their water.
Okay, it's, okay, David, do you have that?
Mayor, tiered, tiered water pricing is an acceptable standard. It's been, it has been encouraged by the Arizona Department of Water Resources since the Groundwater Management Act was, was passed in, in, in 1980. And, and the way it works is, first of all, you need a base. In other words, all of us, as a consuming public, use X amount of gallons per person per day to do the kinds of things as human beings that we, that we do. The real differential is the, the exterior use, and, because 60% plus of your, your water usage is, is exterior-related. So that is where you have the real, both interior and exterior, has potential to conserve. The, the greatest rate of return is, is conservation of, of exterior use. So tiered pricing is a way to, to incentivize customers. The base rate is to ensure that every customer, regardless of, of demographic, has that block of water to go about his or her day. And as, as a matter of practice, Mr. Bradford suggested an actual rate comparison by tier of some of our sister cities. This, this might, this will provide an answer to who in Arizona, who in Arizona is, is using the tiered system and what those, what those rates are. We didn't itemize the, the tiers themselves. As I mentioned, our new rate structure, the base rate was 0 to 8,000 gallons, tier two is 8,001 to 20,000 gallons, tier three was 20, the old tier three was over 20,000 gallons. We now have 20 to 30,000 gallons, and the new tier four, 30,000 gallons plus. So all of those cities, and, and that was just a snapshot, it's obviously not all-inclusive, but they all have at least two tiers. Most of the Valley cities have four tiers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, further comments from the public? Can we still open the hearing?
I'm so sorry, and I'm so sorry.
You'll have to go back to the, ma'am.
Quickly, one more thing, just got the bill, so.
You need to speak.
Say that all again.
You're on TV.
Judy Adams, 9803 South 182nd Drive in Goodyear. So on my water bill, if I'm into the second and third tier, will my water bill display that? That's my question.
Good question.
So that I know that if I'm, you know.
Does the first 8,000 say a buck forty-six, and the second 2,000 say a dollar seventy, or whatever it is, or?
I'll defer.
Well, Larry, do you know?
Mayor, to be candid, I, I don't know, but we can certainly find that out in a hurry.
Sean, do you know?
Does anybody live in Goodyear?
That's it, oh, ma'am, why don't, why don't we find out and publish that for the entire city?
I'll, yeah.
Is that all right? To explain the water bill as far as the tier charging, so it's clear. And that's, that's, that could be a conservation item, so.
Mayor, some cities do in fact itemize that by tier.
Yeah.
I know Amundale does.
Okay.
But I'll get that information to Ms. Adams.
Can I close the public hearing, David, or you got something else? Pardon me?
My name is Tim Riley, I live at 18354 West Piedmont Drive in, in Goodyear. Couple of comments that were made earlier, Mr. Councilmember Cavalier made a comment about people who have been here for a long time and shouldn't incur certain costs, and I, this is the first time I have been under the opinion that we had water sources coming from more than one place, where certain parts of the city got water from point A, and certain parts of the city got water from point B, and never was aware of that. And if that is the case, as the city planned to grow, the city should have taken that consideration as a annex to other parts of the city to grow and, and build certain houses. And so if I live, for example, in Estrella Parkway, and I have a new home that's two years old, and I flush my toilet, and for analogy's sake, it costs me eight cents, and if you live in Pebble Creek, you flush your toilet, it should cost you eight cents, not six. Whether you get your water from a different source or not, it's because it's not fair if I'm flushing for eight and you're flushing for six. Plus, there's a lot of new, there's a lot of new buildings being, new houses being built on the south side, on the north side of 10, and the comment that was made earlier was that people who live on north of 10 shouldn't have to pay for the cost of all the new development on the south side of 10. Well, again, that's not fair. If there's more crime on the north side of 10, should you pay more for cops than we should pay on the south side of 10? I mean, you know, that, you don't equate the cost for that. So from a standpoint of water, I don't think the people living north or south, it shouldn't matter, we live in Goodyear. And if it costs 10 cents to, to use a gallon of water, we should all pay 10 cents for a gallon of water. And if you use 20,000 gallons and I use 10, you should have a higher water bill than I have. But if you use 10,000 gallons of water and you live in Pebble Creek, and I live in Estrella and use 10,000 gallons, we should have the same water bill. And the disparity between that, I think, is unfair. we should have the same water bill. And the disparity between that, I think, is unfair. And I'd like somebody to comment on that particular issue.
David, do you want to respond to that, or?
Mayor, council member, sir, the thing is, under state law, the Lipskill Service Company has the legal right to provide the water and wastewater services for those areas north of I-10 within their certificated areas. The rates that they charge have to be approved by the Arizona Corporation Commission. The rates that they charge, the operation of their facility, staffing, regulatory requirements, et cetera, go through that commission every time that service provider goes up in, in front of them for a rate case. Their sources of water, their infrastructure are different than the city of Goodyear's. Our cost of service is based on our resource mix, infrastructure, our staffing, our regulatory requirements, et cetera. One, one of the big differentials is why it's so difficult for private water companies to adopt conservation-related pricing or incentive pricing, is legally, they have to deliver whatever that consumer uses, whether it's a thousand gallons a day or, or half a million gallons a day. There are no restrictions. The city, on the other hand, has conservation restrictions under the Groundwater Management Act, the groundwater code, so our, our pricing is, is based on those, those resources mix, the infrastructure, the operations, and, and regulatory compliance. So, so there is a distinction there. Once again, I'd be happy to get additional information to our citizen in writing.
I think that answered the question.
Well.
Can, can we limit you to one minute right now?
Absolutely.
Good.
Tim Riley, one eight three five four, West Piedmont. You know, is it because on the south side of I-10, there's all these canals and all this water running all over the place, that we as citizens who live on the south side of I-10 are paying a higher rate? I mean, you know, you say that there's a different water company that, that has control of the water. Well, the city of Goodyear annexed that part of town, should they have not taken that into consideration when it comes to rates? Because that was my question, and no one answered that.
I, I think you did answer the question.
No, he told me, he gave me the deciding factor about how rates are structured, I understand that.
Yeah. And, and they're structured by the, what is it?
By the individuals who own the water.
No, the, uh.
Corporation.
Corporation.
Water corporation.
Yeah.
The corporation.
As you annexed, as you annexed that, did you not take that into consideration?
It's just like private property, sir, we don't have authority to take, take it over. We'd have to take it by eminent domain.
I didn't ask you if you took it over. I said, you take that into consideration, is what my question was. When you annexed that part into Goodyear, is all, that was my question.
It was twenty years ago.
And if it wasn't taken into consideration, it's fine, but my question was, was that taken into consideration when you annexed that part into Goodyear, based on the water differentials?
Well, of course, it was annexed in the late eighties, I believe, is correct?
Yes.
The water rates north of I-10 are based on the corporate commission. It's a certificated district. We have two actually up there. Lipskill's the big one. You talk Pebble Creek, several people have, Pebble Creek and Palm Valley are serviced by Lipskill. Those rates are set and agreed to and confirmed by the corporate commission. Ours are a function of what it costs to get the water to you, and there could very well be a difference. Some day, some year, one could be higher than the other and vice versa. Okay, the quality of wells varies, depending on where you are in the city, and the quality of wastewater treatment varies, depending on which of the two. So costs are gonna vary in accordance with law and the service provided. They, it's unlikely that they're gonna be identical, but at any one time, one could be higher than the other over a period of time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing is still open? Close the public hearing. Okay, we're gonna go to the ordinance first, here, and, and then we'll get to your questions, Rob. Let's start with the ordinance, and I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance oh six, one zero, one two. Ordinance to adopt mending provisions of chapter fourteen of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the establishment of rates and fees by resolution of council, to include provisions for fire prevention systems, to create provisions for unauthorized use of water, to establish a procedure for hearing rights, and to establish general provisions relating to city and water and sewer services.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're on the ordinance, and I'll ask for a motion, please.
Motion to accept ordinance oh six, one oh one two, as read by the clerk.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Councilmember Holland. It's open for council discussion. Councilmember Antoniak?
Just, I hate to be repetitive, but I'm gonna ask the same question that was asked in the public, and I can't venture to guess that there's not somebody in the room, given the water expertise that we have.
I can hear you.
Oh, okay, wow. Given, given the water expertise we have in the room, I'm gonna be a little bit redundant and ask the same question that was asked during the public session. The tiered rates about commercial versus residential, are you able to provide any rationale about that tonight? I can't recall in my few months that I was with private water, a private water business, but I recall them being different. I can't remember whether commercial was higher or lower, and I remember the tiers being different as well. And I know there's a rationale. Can I explain that? I can't, otherwise I would try to, but.
Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, I've, I've got twenty-three years in this business, and honest to God, I'm not gonna guess. I, I don't, I don't, I don't have, I don't have the correct answer for you.
Paul, do you know, Paul, now, okay.
Sean, it's a pretty common practice throughout the United States, I know, to have tiers and to have.
Agreed.
Different tiers for commercial and different tiers for residential.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Antoniak, typically, commercial rates, the tiered structure, is at a lesser rate than residential to support growth of business. The base fee and the, and the rate is set on a, there's a cost of service study that's done as part of the rate case, so as Black and Beach did the study, they look at, what does it cost us to service that customer? And then the rates, base rate and tiered rates are based off of that. Commercial property typically uses more water on a month-to-month basis than a residential unit, and it's, I don't want to use the word incentivize, but it's an incentive to lower the cost to the businesses to bring in commercial property. That's typical. I mean, I'm back, I'm, I come from back east, all the systems I've managed is the same way.
Is it, okay, but tip, I mean, I guess, in terms of the, the meter size, what's the smallest commercial meter we have in the city?
Depending on the size of the business, I wouldn't think that we would have anything smaller than one inch.
Got it. Because tip, okay.
It, it would be typically larger, but you may have a, a small business, a standalone business that would have a one-inch service, but I would expect the majority of our commercial property to have multiple meters, both fire and domestic, four inches and larger in size.
Right. Because that's typically where we make up the differential, isn't the meter cost?
Correct.
Because the meter cost is usually substantially larger.
I don't have the rate in front of me, but as, as you look at those, those fee structures, the larger meters are quite, are quite more expensive than the residential.
With the exception of the smaller ones, they're only about twenty, they're only seventy or sixty cents.
Correct.
Fifty cents more.
And then the meter size is incapable of metering large volumes of water, so you wouldn't have a, a small business that would use two or three hundred thousand gallons of water in a month. The meter would be incapable of reading that.
Right.
So that service would be upsized to be able to properly meter and register that water usage. Does that help?
It helps, but it's not getting, it's just, it's not.
And it's based off of cost, the cost of service study that was in the Black and Beach report.
Are you asking?
It helps, I just, I'm just wondering, I, I.
So I'll ask council.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's more of a rationale between a dollar sixty-eight versus, you know, zero to eight thousand, and the residential being a dollar sixty-eight, and zero to forty being a dollar sixty-eight. I mean, the gentleman brings up a decent, a halfway decent rationale here this evening.
We'd be, we'd be happy to, to meet with Black and Beach and to discuss their rationale behind the structure and report back to mayor and council in writing.
At the same time, recognizing the influences that this has on economic development. I mean, I think it's important to do that. Okay.
Okay, so you, you agree that you will further, look into this further?
Yes.
Okay.
Report back in writing.
Okay. To explain the difference in, the rationale for the differences in the commercial and residential?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just coming on, on the size of the meter. Size of the meter, maybe it doesn't have a, I mean, some residential have one-inch meters.
It hasn't.
They don't have seven inches. I mean, these go, big difference. I know, but some commercial are one-inch also.
Big, big difference. You're talking about service capacity. You might need one inch at a split second in your house. They need one inch in commercial, twenty-four-seven, and so you have a lot more water going through. We used to always, when I was having this discussion, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, we used to always say, it wasn't the cost of the water necessarily, it was the cost to deliver it to you and the infrastructure that's there. The infrastructure on a one-inch meter, albeit it might be the same at a residential as it is at a commercial, it's using and being taxed a lot more.
Okay.
So you might have to replace that meter sooner, you might have to service that meter a lot more often, et cetera, et cetera, and therefore, the charge is commensurate to that service.
Okay. Further comments, discussion?
It's, it's a shame that the folks that were making all the comments, comments left. I had all kinds of explanations for them, but they, uh.
And I think that should be noted, that council did have some comments in response to the people, the citizens that were concerned that came forth, and they didn't stay to hear what our comments are. So I'd like that in the minutes, that we were ready to, to respond to some of their needs and desires, and they didn't stay. So I want you to know this council is a concerned council and a working council.
Mayor, Councilmember Lord, they all have my cards.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Can I, can I make a request? I assume we're gonna get a written response about the difference. Can we make sure the gentleman that made the comment and brought it to our attention this evening gets copied on the same yellow paper that we would receive at the same time?
However you do it, he's already, you've already been told, we're gonna notify you in writing the answer to the question. So how we do that, it's up to the staff. Okay? And he may have already heard the answer, so we'll see if there's another answer out there. Okay, we'll now move to the resolution, and I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution oh six, one zero, five one. Adopting resolution establishing water and sewer rates and fees to recover full operating costs and costs associated with providing potable water service and sewer service and providing an effective date.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I move we adopt resolution zero six, one zero, five one, read, as read by the city clerk.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Lord, and a second from Councilmember Sousa. It's open for discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor, council members.
Okay, we'll now move to conduct the public hearing and consider approving the primary property tax levy for fiscal year zero six dash zero seven. Open the public hearing, Larry Lang.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Throughout the last few months, we have been working on the budget, and as part of that, I went too far, apologize that we are, as part of the budget process, we're in the final phases, and tonight's public hearing on this issue is the truth in taxation hearing for the property tax rates. Property tax rates in Arizona are computed two, two ways. One is, or, two variables. One is the rate that is established, and the second is the assessed valuation. The city of Goodyear's property tax rate makes up approximately ten percent of the entire property tax bill for most areas within the, the community. The components of the tax levy, which is the total dollars expected to be collected, are the primary property tax levy, which is used to fund the general operations of the city, and the secondary property tax levy, which is used to retire general obligation bonds. As we've gone through the budget process, we have worked on a premise of, of the primary property tax levy being increased in accordance with the, the previous statutory authority, that we were well below that authority, over one point two million dollars below the maximum that we could levy for the primary property tax. However, there was recent state legislation changes that went through as the legislature was closing their session that changed the estimates that we included in the budget process, and actually allow us to levy less property taxes than, than we had shown in the tentative budget. So if you look at the chart that I've got on the screen, the tentative budget primary property tax rate was eighty-six cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation, and the secondary rate is seventy-four cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. These were the proposed numbers for that. For those people in the audience that may have come from other states, Arizona is very unique. The assessed valuation for a residential house is one, or ten percent of the assessor's value placed on that house. And so if you subtract out and figure your own residence using that formula in other states, it's often referred to as a mill levy, you'll come out with ten times higher property taxes than what your actual is in Arizona. Because of the impact in the legislation, the maximum primary rate that we can establish this year is seventy-nine point four five cents per hundred dollars assessed valuation. The, the city council has worked towards an overall tax rate of one dollar and sixty cents per hundred dollars, and in doing that in the tentative budget, the general fund was subsidizing general obligation bonds primarily for water and sewer system improvements. And so as, as an alternative for the city council, we would recommend that we go to a primary rate of point seven nine four five per hundred dollars, and a secondary rate of eighty point five five cents per hundred dollars, and use that money to fund the additional portions of that general obligation bond debt. From here, after my comments, it's a public hearing to receive input from the public. Action on this council would act, or, on this item would take place on July tenth to adopt the final tax levy, and our recommendation in adopting that tax levy would be a primary rate of point seven nine four five per hundred dollars, and a secondary rate of point eight zero five five per hundred dollars. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and you may receive public input, and I'll answer those questions also.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Open for public comment. Public comment? Against the tax rate. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. We'll now move to a public hearing to discuss adoption of the final budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and six, and ending July, June thirty, two thousand and seven. I'll open the public hearing, Larry Lang.
I will keep my comments brief on this. I think over the past month, you've heard probably more than you wanted to about the budget as we've gone through in depth on this. And so I do a brief summary. The reason this item is separated from the other item that you just did is that the budget itself, under most Arizona state law, refers to the expenditure side of the equation. The total budget as presented, adopted, or, adopted by the city council in the form of the tentative budget is four hundred and eighty million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand and seventy-four dollars. The components of that are seventy-two million dollars for operations. Those operations include general fund operations, those are annual expenses that would include personnel costs, the utilities, lights, and so forth. Hundred and sixty-five million dollars for the capital improvement plan, which includes major capital and improvements that are expected over the next twelve months. Two hundred million dollars for other financing items that have been discussed. If they go through, then, they may not, but we need to, because we're expenditure-based in the budget, we need to include them in case they may go through. Included in that category would be possible financing for a stadium facility, and also a possible improvement district for the proposed West Core Mall area. The remaining categories of fifteen million dollars or three percent is the contingency re- Uh the remaining um categories of fifteen million dollars or 3% is the contingency reserve, um and then um five million dollars for a possible increase in state shared revenues, um as well as um other expenditures in a number of different categories, including uh small equipment and one-time purchases. There is no change in this uh budget from the tentative budget, which was adopted by the city council on June 12th. It does include four hundred and seventy-one full-time positions, and it does provide flexibility for the city council to review after state shared revenues are finalized. Received word earlier this evening that the numbers have finally come in on the census and we'll be able to start doing those calculations to be ready for you in September, as we had discussed previously. What's next, uh receive input from the public on the final budget and adopting the final budget um in a special meeting. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Now it's open for public comment, and it's on the final budget. Public comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and uh recess the regular meeting at this time, and I'll convene a special meeting to adopt the final budget, to adopt the final budget. We're doing this to be in compliance with uh state statute requirements. Call the order of the special meeting. All council persons are in attendance. One item on our business agenda, and that is to adopt the resolution for the final budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2006, and ending June 30, 2007. Ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution oh six one zero five two, adopting resolution determining and adopting the final estimates of proposed expenditures by the city of Goodyear for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2006, and ending June 30, 2007.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Could I have a motion to adopt the final budget by adopting the resolution?
Go ahead.
A motion from councilmember Sousa and a second from councilmember Antoniak. It's open for discussion. Adopting the final budget.
In the resolution, Mr. Mayor, should we include the figure of four hundred and eighty million dollars? The budget.
Larry, what do you think of that?
I didn't hear that.
Uh the question is, should we include the total dollar value in the budget expenditure line with four hundred and eighty million? Is that right?
Yes, it's okay to include it, yes.
Council like that included?
Okay.
Sounds like you'd like to have that. Do we need to make a motion on that, or just, no?
Just to include the figure.
Okay, so we'll do that. Further comments? Okay, uh roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Pass seven zero.
Okay, thank you, uh adjourn the special meeting. Thank you, Larry. And uh we'll reconvene the regular meeting, and uh we're gonna have La Privada and uh Paseo Ridge. Why don't we take a break? Uh how about reconvene at seven forty-five? Is that all right?
Yep.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
We'll uh reconvene a special, the regular meeting, and uh we'll start with Harvey Kraus. We're gonna be doing uh on your agenda will be E, F, G, and H, all related to La Privada. And Harvey, I guess you'll do all four, or your your fellows will, if you don't, and uh and then we'll take each one individually, correct? Is that clear?
Yes. Vice Mayor, members of council, members of the, I'm gonna discuss the pre-annexation agreement and the adoption of the annexation ordinance, and I'll be followed by um Rick Williams, who will discuss the zoning and the plat for um... Focus this a little bit better. It's sensible. La Privada is the area that's shaded in green. It's bordered on the south by Yuma, on the north by, it's known as the Harrison Street alignment, and on the east by a hundred and eighty Bush Avenue alignment, and then on the west by Perryville Road. It contains a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety-eight acres, and the applicant is Sun Bucks Investments LLC. It's an Arizona limited liability company. And um what you have before you is a pre-annexation agreement that mirrors the um memorandum of understanding that was approved by the council on May twenty-third of night, uh 2005, and uh the agreement just is exactly like um the MOU, so we don't need to go through that. The property owner was a participant of the MOU, and so this is what, that's the first item. The second item is the actual annexation of this property. It is um borders on Amber Meadows, which has been annexed by the city, the city strip annexation, which is on Perryville Road, um also Mariah, I guess what we phase one or Paseo Ridge, phase one, I guess is what it's called. Uh it also borders on that. We are considering annexation uh after this item for Paseo Ridge, phase two, which is forty-two acres located in this area. So the property uh is buts the city in three places or more than that, uh does not but the city on county property to the east as well as this county property. Otherwise, it it does um touch the city. It it meets the statutory requirements for annexation. The council recalls at your last meeting on June 12th, you had the public hearing, uh I'm sorry, that's not correct, you had the public hearing um in January uh 2006. There there were no public comments on the hearing. Uh the council, the staff has received the annexation petition signed by the property owners, and um the uh, once the annexation ordinance is approved, it becomes effective thirty days after council approval. That concludes my comments on the pre-annexation and the annexation ordinance, and I will turn it over to Rick, who will discuss the um re-zoning and the plat.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Just give a little orientation here. La Privada development, Amber Meadows to the northwest, uh Paseo Ridge, phase one directly south of this, uh phase two, which we're considering later on this evening, Los Montanas, which y'all have already seen, and uh, sir, this would be the county residence to the east and to the north up here. The general plan calls for a low-density residential with a base density of two to four dwelling units per acre. The La Privada development, as Harvey indicated, is a participating member of the MOU, and that creates a baseline density of 2.85. La Privada proposes uh a proposed density of 3.1 dwelling units uh per acre, which is consistent with the surrounding developments. La Privada proposes 578 lots in a gated community. The proposing two-lot size this evening, um a 7,000-square-foot lot and an 8,750-square-foot lot. Basically, the two lots are are 60 by 120 and 70 by 125. The development proposes 37.5 acres of open space, or roughly 20%, with amenities to include shaded ramadas, ball courts, barbecue facilities, neighborhood and pedestrian trails, bike paths, and a multi-use equestrian trail that... bike paths, and a multi-use equestrian trail that runs along the eastern boundary of the development, creating a nice little buffer with the county residence to the east. Each parcel is designated around a neighborhood tree program, giving each a distinct and yet unique sort of individualism. La Privada is also dedicating 8.1 acres in conjunction with Amber Meadows to create a school site that's generally located in this area right here. Neighborhood meeting was held on February 23rd. Neighborhood meeting was held on February 23rd, and we had a second additional meeting on May 11th. Subsequently, the first neighborhood meeting, sir, produced issues with regards to the Harrison Road Alignment and improvements along 181st Avenue. Being able to go back with Pete Turner in the Liberty Elementary School District, they were able to make some adjustments to the school site, so the extension of Harrison Road and the improvements 181st were no longer necessary. At the regularly scheduled meeting in May, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously approval to send this on to you this evening. Staff is recommending approval of the rezone and final plat, as well as, I'm sorry, on the preliminary plat, subject to the stipulations that are contained in the staff report. Now, Mr. Mayor, if I may, we do have one minor little stipulation revision that we need to make in both the preliminary plat, sir, and the rezone. It references May 10th as the, let me see, the stipulation number two in the rezone, it represents, references a May 10th, 2006 development plan. That should be June 9th, 2006 development plan.
Is that item B?
That should be...
Oh, that's item... A, B, C.
What stipulation, which number?
I'm sorry, stipulation number two in the preliminary, I'm sorry, in the final PAD, as well as stipulation number...
What was it supposed to change?
Fifty-one. It should be June 6th, 2006. I'm sorry, June 9th, 2006.
2006.
And then I believe it is stipulation 52 in the preliminary plat.
Fifty what?
Fifty-two in the preliminary plat.
I got it. You do?
Yeah.
Okay. Calling you for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, again, we'll continue with these four separate actions and combine them in one still at this point, and it's open now for the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. For the record, my name is Andy Moore. My address is 3101 North Central in Phoenix, and I'm here on behalf of Omega Management, who's the developer of the property. We're very pleased to be here this night, this evening, with the project that we believe is exceptional. We've been thrilled with the cooperation and help we've had from your staff in going through the process and in together working out a plan that we think will be a valuable neighborhood in this area. We are proposing, as you've heard, to rezone this, so that we would have a final PAD in our preliminary plat this evening for 578 dwelling units. The general plan for this area, as you know, is two to four dwelling units per acre, and the density here is consistent with that. And again, as staff pointed out, this project is a participation in the West Goodyear MOU, and so the development agreement has us paying in advance a number of fees for water and wastewater and fire, so that we can be one of the 16 property owners that are helping to bring infrastructure to this area to make it happen in a timely manner. As far as the details of the development, there's two major monumentation areas as you come in. Our main entry is here on 183rd and Yuma, and our secondary entry is up at the corner of Perryville and Harrison. This is a view of some of our monumentation as you come in, what we expect it to look like, so it should be well landscaped, a unique product as we come in. It will create a real statement, both here and secondarily on Perryville Road as people enter into development. This is, in fact, a gated community. This is a view of what coming into one of our gated areas should look like. Our gates, we have five different locations where there's gates. You can see on the plan I'm pointing to, there's one right here up on Harrison Street. There's one right here on 183rd. There's one on each side further up on 183rd. And then Harrison Street and 183rd culminate in the fifth gated entry up here near the school area. As staff also mentioned, we have a street tree program, and what that means is that the area between the street and the sidewalk is gonna be landscaped, and it's part of the builder's development, a responsibility to do that. Now, the homeowner will maintain that, but the builder will be putting in each separate neighborhood a theme of various trees, since you'll actually, if you pay attention, be able to tell by the landscaping between the street and the sidewalk that you're in a whole different neighborhood, because there'll be a theme for each area, giving a different streetscape. We're providing along our streets, one of the aspects of our PAD is that we're providing a variable front building setback for all of our buildings. So all lots within La Privada will have setbacks of varying, from 20-foot setback to 26-foot setback for the house from the street. All garages for all the side-entry models will be set back between 10 and 16 feet from the street. In addition, we have the landscaping between the street and the sidewalk. So one of the things we're excited about is as you, as you come down any one of our streets, you're gonna get a view that is varied and set in a different angle, different perspective. We have a lot of varying house product. So what we're gonna be seeing is not a straight street with straight houses all lined up in a row. We're gonna have different product, different elevation, different setbacks, both for the front of the product and also for any garages that are side-entry garages, and we think it's really exciting. It should be a real dynamic view as you drive through our community. We have two different lot sizes, as staff pointed out. There's the typical lot size of 7,710 square feet will be in these three areas here. The typical lot size of 9,345 square feet is gonna be in these two areas here. So those are minimums of 7,000 and minimum of 8,750, but the typical lot sizes, as I said, will be quite a bit larger than that as we're coming in. One of the things we're also excited about is our parks and open space and trails that we're providing. We have four, what we're calling, active parks in this area. I'll point them out to you. One is here, 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 and here. These are our four active parks. In our active parks, we're providing, two of them has full basketball courts and tot lots with shade canopy over the equipment, and two of them have two sand volleyball courts each. All four of the active parks include ramadas, bike parking, bench seating, barbecues, drinking fountains, open play terrains. So those are our four active parks. We have three what we're calling passive parks, which are located here, here, and here. These three passive parks will contain a ramada with an open play area for each of them. There are three pocket parks. Pocket parks are more of a ramada and a bench as you come along, trail areas. We have one here, we have one here, and we have one again over here. So we have quite a few variety and types of parks scattered throughout. As you can see from our landscape plan, they're all connected by green pathways, trails, and sidewalks, so that you can conceivably take a comfortable route just about any place in this development from one place to another. It should be very pedestrian-friendly. And as I mentioned, since we are requiring that there'll be trees between the sidewalk and the street before anyone even moves in, the builder has to put it in when he comes through, and then it's gonna be landscaped, or watered as soon as people come in. It's gonna be a landscaped and friendly environment for people to be walking on. One of our trails that we have is the eight-foot-wide multi-use easement. It's gonna roll along our east side. Our regular old pathway will continue up here, but the equestrian trail and the eight-foot multi-use trail is something that's bigger than our development. It's actually part of the general plan, and you remember, it was sort of a swath that was cut through about a half-mile east of Perryville, and so each of the projects that has come along has had to orient where that trail will go. The trail will go starting south of Yuma and come up along our east side and over on Jefferson Street, and then cut up between the county residence and the Amber Meadows project. Then there actually is already some half-right-of-way there that's existed for some time where that trail will go through. Now, unfortunately, it ends at the canal. We can't do anything about that, but I'm sure we'll find a way to get it over the canal, because it is connected then at Las Palmas above the canal that continues on up towards the highway. And eventually, this will be a trail that will cover quite a space, quite a distance for people to use in this area. Our open space is 37.5 acres of our project, or it's 20.1%. As you know, we're required under the PAD ordinance to have a 12% open space, and your parks, trails, and open space plan asked us to have 15% of open space. We're thrilled to give you 20, and of that 20% open space, 40% of that will remain high and dry. It's not gonna be combined with retention or anything like that. So we're, again, excited about our parks, that people will actually be able to use rainy season or not in our project. As staff mentioned, we're donating to Liberty Elementary School District, half of the school site. Amber Meadows came through and has been approved previously. They donated the other half, and so there will be an elementary school right here. And then for the high school district, we're paying our fees for the school compact in this area. We'll be constructing traffic signals when warranted for Perryville Road and Harrison Street, and again, for Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue. We'll be dedicating the street dedications per right-of-way for every arterial street that we're near. Half-street median improvements for both Yuma and Perryville we'll be providing as well. I wanted to mention, staff said that there were several neighborhood meetings. There were two, and we learned a lot from the first one. We had a plan that was showing Harrison Street coming right on through, and we'd done that because that made sense with some plating and some connections, and we were concerned about what would happen if we didn't provide accessway all the way through this area of land. The county residents asked us, please do not make that street go through. We don't want people cutting through there. We don't need them. We were able to go back and talk with the school district, talk with police and fire, and they too, it turns out, were comfortable with us ending Harrison Street here and not running it through the county properties. In addition, our original plan had 181st Avenue being developed, and coming up here is another street. The county residents to our east and north said, please don't do that. We were able to take that off and work again with your engineers to make that comfortable. It turns out, in fact, that there's not even the right-of-way there. We couldn't have done it had we wanted to. We found out later. So that was also a bonus to us and a bonus to the neighbors. Finally, the neighbors asked us, please don't put two-story houses right on the edge of your development overlooking our property. And so we also agree to that. What that means is none of the houses on our north side along Jefferson Street, and none of the lots along our east side will be allowed to be two-story. Now, per your stipulations, we're already fairly limited on what can be two-story. No corner lots. Every two houses has to have, I think, a third that's a one-story. And so what this has done is further limited our ability to have two stories. This particular agreement with the neighbors lost us 61 lots where we could have had 37 of those being two-story, so they'll all be one-story. That's okay. We think this is, could be a great development nonetheless. But as a result, our initial neighborhood meeting, we had a lot of people there and a lot of intensity and excitement. By the time we got to Planning Commission, we had one speaker from the neighborhood who came and stood up and wanted to thank us for our participation with the neighbors. I don't know if there's anyone here tonight. We'd love to hear from them, but I think we've done our background and revised a plan that will not only fit well with what's just been approved and proposed in the area, but will fit well with the existing county residents there. We have staff recommending approval. We have unanimous Planning Commission recommendation for approval. I would ask for your approval, and just note again, as staff said, that stipulation number two and 51 of the PAD ordinance and stipulation number 52 of the pre-plat ought to say June 9th, '06 is the date of the development plan, not May 10th. And with that, I'm available for your questions or comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Opportunity now for anyone in the public to comment? Okay, thank you. Why don't we start with the pre-annexation development agreement, and ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only? City manager.
Adopt Resolution 06-1053, approving a pre-annexation development agreement with Sunbucks Investment LLC, an Arizona Limited Liability Company, regarding the annexation and infrastructure development of 198 acres generally located at the southeast corner of Harrison Street Alignment and Perryville Road, and the northeast corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue Alignment within Maricopa County, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Ask for motion, please.
Motion, accept Resolution 06-1053, as read by the city manager.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Again, we're talking pre-annexation development agreement, and it's open for discussion. Could I roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
We'll now consider approving the ordinance annexing approximately 198 acres of land. Ask the city manager to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Adopt Ordinance 06-1013, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto, by annexing approximately 198 acres of land known as La Privada, generally located at the southeast corner of Harrison Street Alignment and Perryville Road, and the northeast corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue Alignment, and providing a city zoning designation of agricultural urban AU.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
I move we adopt 06-2908 to adopt the ordinance. This is where you are. 06-10, 06-1013 for annexation for La Privada, as read by the city, as read by the city manager. Took me a while to get that out.
You were persistent, though.
I was persistent.
Have a motion from Councilmember Lord, and a second from Councilmember Holland. Open for discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye, please.
Need a roll call, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, you do, sir. Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
Okay, for the next two, I think, Councilmember Antoniak, you'll make the motion on the next two. Okay, ask the clerk to read the rezoning ordinance by title only, please.
Adopt Ordinance 06-1014, providing for conditional rezoning of 197.8 acres of property from the agricultural urban AU zoning district to the final planned area development, PAD zoning district, for a residential development known as La Privada, 05-200-00028, located at the southeast corner of Perryville Road and Harrison Road Alignment, and the northeast corner of Yuma Road and the 183rd Avenue Alignment, amending supplementary zoning map number 05-242 to provide for changes in zoning, provide separability, and providing for an effective date.
Councilmember Antoniak, may I have a motion, please? May I move that we adopt Ordinance 06-1014, amending stipulations number two and 51, striking the word "May 10" and replacing with "June 9"? Motion from Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Sousa. It's open for discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 7-0. Pass 7-0.
Okay, we may have discussion on this. We'll see. We'll now discuss approving the preliminary plat and to subdivide approximately 197.8 acres into 578 single-family residential units or lots for La Privada. Ask for a motion to approve the preliminary plat, Councilmember Antoniak.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the preliminary plat for La Privada, subdividing approximately 197.8 acres into 578 single-family lots, generally located southeast corner Perryville and Harrison, and this northeast corner of Yuma and 183rd Avenue, amending stipulation number 52, again, striking the word "May 10," replacing it with the words "June 9."
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Lord. It's open for discussion on the preliminary plat. All those in favor of the motion signify by standing aye, please. Aye. Close. Guys have a 7-0. Okay, we'll now move to Cale Ridge. Is that a first for you, Andy? We'll do the ordinance to annex, and we'll do the rezoning, and we'll do the preliminary plat. And Harvey Kraus, you'll lead in that discussion, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. This is an ordinance to annex Cale Ridge, located at the northwest corner of 183rd Avenue alignment in Yuma, green area. We just obviously took action on La Privada. At your June 12th meeting, your last regular scheduled meeting, you took action. You had a public hearing on this particular property. At that annexation hearing, we did not have any comments at that hearing. Also, at the same meeting, the council adopted a pre-annexation agreement that covered both Cale Ridge, number one, and number two. And the pre-annexation agreement mirrored the MOU. So this property is already covered in the pre-annexation agreement that deals with the MOU issues. The applicant is now requesting annexation and has submitted a rezoning and a plat on the property after annexation. And Rick Williams can discuss the zoning and plat at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. As Harvey has stated, Cale Ridge Phase Two is 43.53 acres, and it's located at the northwest corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Street. I'm sorry, Avenue. They're requesting approval for R16 single-family residential zoning and approval of their preliminary plat this evening as well. Now, the general plan calls for low density residential in this area. And just to point it out again, La Privada, which we just saw, the Amber Meadows development, Cale Ridge Phase One and Cale Ridge Phase Two, Los Mentanas located there to the west. Cale Ridge is a participating member of the MOU, provides a baseline density of 2.85. Cale Ridge Phase Two proposes a base density of 3.25, which combined with Phase One brings the overall density to this project to 2.93, which is consistent with the surrounding developments that you've seen in this area. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take you back just a moment to some pre-meeting that we had two weeks ago. I just would like to revisit Phase One for just a moment, if we could. And I'm going to turn this this direction. I think that might make it a little bit better. This is north up here. This would be the Los Mentanas development. This is the shared green belt that we have with the Los Mentanas development. This is the drainage channel that's a continuation from the La Privada development headed south. This is where the city is redirecting just to come around and join with the Perderra development to the south, so that basically, we wouldn't impose that. The reason it didn't just continue on south is so we wouldn't impose it on the Perderra development at the high part of their land. Moving on to the Phase Two. It's 136 lots. Excuse me, one second. It's 136 lots on roughly 43 acres. They're offering one lot size in this development, which are 6,000 square foot lots. Access to the development will be along Yuma Road, which is here to the south end, off of 193rd as well. Cale Ridge offers seven and a half acres of open space, which roughly equates to 18.3%. It includes pocket parks, pedestrian connections, surrounding trails, homes fronting open space, and a shaded top lot as well. Neighborhood meeting was held on February 23rd. Several of the neighbors, again, came out and were concerned about the proposed density and the infringement on their lifestyle. Planning and zoning recommended unanimous approval at their May meeting and sending it before you this evening. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance 06-1016 and the preliminary plat this evening, subject to the stipulations contained in the staff reports before you this evening. Mr. Mayor, council, that concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Open for the applicant.
Mayor and council, Dustin Jones with Snell and Wilmer. On behalf of the applicant and developer of this project, Mariah Development. Also with me is Karen Keat, and my client is Nick Lees, who's here in the audience. Trying to keep to my word, I committed to Councilmember Lord that I wouldn't keep her past 8:30 myself, although the Vice Mayor said that I should go until nine. But Councilmember Lord is much better looking, so I'm going to try to be very brief. Staff has given a very thorough presentation on the case before you this evening. It's, we're a bit begrudging to have to present this to you in two phases. The original intent was not for this to be two phases. This was one development, Cale Ridge. But because of state law and with respect to annexation, the annexation applications have to be done separately because they're two different properties, and the annexation moved forward a little too fast on the last one, or I should say, moved too slow on the Phase Two. So we had to bring it to you in two separate applications. So before you are two different applications, two different projects, if I can have Elmo. Ooh, this is a new one. This is a new. As staff has indicated, this is the aerial for the site, the Phase One and the Phase Two. Phase One was before you in your most recent council meeting. The statistics, as staff has indicated on the two phases, our follow-up combined the project is 2.93 dwelling units per acre. Because we had to separate the two to comply with the annexation laws, we have 3.25 on the case that's before you. The case that was approved last week was 2.7, but collectively, it's 2.93. Also, with respect to the open space, as you can see in the case that was before you, it's your last council meeting, and the case that's before you tonight, 18.1. Collectively, the open space is 22.3% of the project. Significant amount of open space and parks and trails that are being provided in the site. If you can imagine this site next to the case that was just approved by this council with La Privada here, you can see how this all kind of fits together within a master plan, this piece here fitting into the piece that was just approved by council. Much attention has been paid to the entry features on these three different projects, the Cale Ridge here, La Privada here, and Los Mentanas, which is on this side here. Much attention has been paid by the landscape architects to draw these projects together on the entries here. So there will be a greater attention paid to the entry monuments that will mark the intersection on this site. Some questions that came up at the last council meeting with respect to the entire project had to do with the size of the lots and the size of the homes that would be proposed. And as we indicated in the last meeting, because the lots are 60-foot wide minimum lots, the size of the homes are going to be between 1,800 and 3,000 square feet. That's what the market is sustaining on lots of this size. The market also is sustaining a price point of high $250s to $300,000 for homes in this range in that size of property. Based on some of the comments we also received at the last meeting by one of the neighbors who lives on a county property here, just to our west, this piece here that's on the out, it's kind of an out parcel here. We would like to also propose an additional stipulation. And I don't know that we've mentioned this to staff, but we would propose it on the lots that abut Mr. Trigoboff's home here, as he indicated. The last meeting, we would restrict these five lots there to single-story homes as well. So we would add a stipulation number 56 to the case before you. They would limit these five lots, lots 271 through 275, to be restricted to single-story homes, to better buffer ourselves and be better neighbors to the county parcel to our west. And with that, if there's any other questions or comments, we could entertain those at this time.
What lot numbers were those again?
Lots 271 through 275. And that would be an additional stipulation. It would be 56. I believe there's 55 stipulations on both the zoning and the plat. Staff can correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, open for comments from the public. What comments? Yes, sir. 25, on the southwest Yuma Road. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we had a buffer between, you know, where I live, and I appreciate what they're doing there. There goes the neighborhood. That's all I can say. I knew it couldn't last forever, 26 years or whatever. But at least by going single-story, I appreciate that, so, thank you. Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll run through each of these individually. And we'll start with the ordinance to annex. And ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Adopt Ordinance 06-1015, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto, by annexing approximately 42 acres of land, known as Cale Ridge Phase Two, generally located at the northwest corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue alignment, and providing a city zoning designation of agricultural urban AU.
Okay, thank you. Ask for a motion.
Motion, accept ordinance 06-1015, as read by the city manager.
I have a motion from Councilmember Scott and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Again, we're talking about the annexation, and it's open for discussion. Could I roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Are you going to do a motion? Okay. All right, we'll now move to adopt the ordinance rezoning the acreage.
Can I ask a question before we go into that? Has to do with annexation. I believe I spoke to you today about that. Was there any, had anyone questioned Mr., what's his name, Mr. Trigoboff?
Trigoboff.
Trigoboff. As to why he, if he is planning on, and why he wouldn't annex to the city.
He said that himself.
So we don't end up with county islands and the sort of thing.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, I can't speak 100% for Mr. Trigoboff, but in subsequent conversations, his cousin owns the land next to him. And it's based on a conversation I had with him today. It appears that he'll entertain that coming into the city or what other avenues are available to him when his cousin sells that land as well.
Just didn't want to end up with more county islands than we have. And if we could get these people convinced that they should be in the city, all the better for the city.
I think dollars would convince them to.
Congruent of asking price?
Okay, we'll now move to rezone, and I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Adopt Ordinance 06-1016, providing for conditional rezoning of 43.53 acres of property from the agricultural urban AU zoning district to the R16 single-family residential zoning district for a residential development known as Cale Ridge Phase Two, located at the northwest corner of Yuma Road and the 183rd Avenue alignment, amending supplementary zoning map number 05-235 to provide for the changes in zoning, providing separability, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 06-1016, adding stipulation number 56 to read. Lots 271 to 275 shall be restricted to single-story, single-family homes. Second motion.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Sousa. Open for discussion. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
We'll now move to approve the preliminary plat on Cale Ridge Phase Two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve preliminary plat for Cale Ridge Phase Two, subdividing 43.53 acres into 136 single-family lots, generally located northwest corner of Yuma and 183rd Avenue alignment in the R16 single-family residential district, adding stipulation number 56, to read exactly as it did on the last motion, restricting lots 271 to 275 to single-story, single-family homes.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Lord. All those in favor of the motion signify by standing aye, please.
Aye.
Close. Guys have a 7-0. We'll now move to information items, and ask the city manager for a summary of follow-up items, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city public information office will work in concert with staff from the water resources department to publish information regarding the benefits of the tiered rate system. Additionally, staff will research and report back to the mayor and council regarding how the tiered rates will appear on water, wastewater bills. Water resources staff will meet with a consultant from Black and Beets to better understand the rationale behind charging different rates for the commercial versus the residential. Staff will prepare a report describing the rationale for and advise the mayor and council. This information will also be shared with the citizen who had made that inquiry about the rates at this evening's meeting.
I think the difference is the different water volume within a particular tier for commercial and residential. The rate's the same. The tier.
8,000, 40,000.
Yeah, right. It's the volume of water within the tier.
Okay.
Okay, we're now open for inquiries to staff. Councilmember Antoniak?
Just as I thought, as we were going through a gated community this evening, do we, this fire and police, do we require optocom systems on the gates? I was just asking if we require optocom systems on the gate. That's the infrared system for fire and police. I couldn't recall, so. Didn't want to belabor it earlier, so I thought I'd ask now. Thank you.
Questions? I have one, I guess, Steve and Harvey. At the last, two weeks ago, Frank and I had a problem with Cale Ridge. I was concerned about their density, and I think I used, I was looking at Perryville, De Citrus, and I was concerned about the sameness. And in my office, a couple days later, they argued with me, and they said, the problem is not density, which is probably true. The problem is that your procedures are outmoded. And I don't know how true that is. I'm sure. And, uh, I don't know how true that is, I'm sure we would disagree with that, but they did reference a, a philosophy called form-based codes. And Harvey, my question to the state, are you familiar with that subject, and do you have any view you'd like to express on that, or do you want to come back to us with something? There's a meeting on Friday, which I can't get to because I'm in the League of Cities, but, like, if someone, a decision-maker could be there, or you can explain it now if you'd prefer.
Mayor, we're sending two staff members.
You need to go to the mic.
Uh, Mayor, council, I, I've had some exposure to it. I haven't had detailed exposure to it. We're sending two staff members Friday, it's a day-long session. Uh, basically, what you do is you, um, um, you take out the, the strict zoning, what we call Euclidean zoning, um, the, where you divide up the city in districts and have minimum lots and, and zones, and you, and you, someone proposes a particular use on a piece of property, and you decide at that time whether it fits or doesn't fit. Um, it's very, very flexible, very loose. Um, there, there's some advantages to it, there's some disadvantages to it. It's, it's a whole different, it's a whole different mindset in terms of zoning. We'd have to throw out our zoning ordinance and start all over again. It's pretty, it's pretty, pretty dramatic and pretty radical approach to, uh, and we'd probably need to have a, maybe we should have a work session on it if, uh, the council's interested in, in trying a different approach. I'm not saying that you won't get the same result with what you got tonight, but it's a different way of approaching.
Actually, it's Dustin Jones.
It's his session, I guess. He's teaching his session.
And he's been doing that.
He's teaching?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And, uh, and they, they say that, uh, I think it's worth us knowing more about.
You bet.
But, you know, we're gonna listen to your view on the subject, obviously, but...
I don't have any strong views one way or the other on it. I, I, it's just the different, it just opens up a lot of different things, uh, to us. It'd be, you look at the lot, and you look at where it is next to what, what's next to the lot, and how high you should go, and how much, how much lot coverage should be on a lot basis. It's, it's probably a lot more labor-intensive in terms of our office, um, but it, it would provide some different, different forms out there. I'm not, I'm not sure, I, I don't think, uh, if we had form-based zoning, I don't think you'd get anything different in terms of what you got tonight. I'd question that.
Yeah. They, they, they say you would, uh, so, you know. Do you want him to look at it, or...
Well, I, I think, I mean, I think it's always advantageous to be on the cutting edge, if there, if there is a cutting edge. If, I mean, if there's, and the way to do that is recognize the differences, recognize what advantages and disadvantages there are. I mean, if there weren't, we wouldn't have hybrid and electric vehicles, we'd be running everything on oil and gas, so, I mean, it's...
Maybe if Dustin's gonna present this on Friday, we could present a, a work session.
Yeah.
Well, he could do that, he probably would.
It would seem advantageous to me, Mayor, as well, to involve planning and zoning in, in a similar discussion, and they can have the same stuff as well. Maybe, maybe it comes up through them, a work session with them, and then, and then to, I don't, I don't know if that's, I mean, typically, they see zoning ordinances, so I have a work session together. Yeah, we could do that.
How about if we have you or your folks, whoever goes to this, come back with a paper to us and explain it a little bit, and suggest whether we have a work session or not, and...
Okay. We can also outline the pros and cons, I think, of what, of the two different types of zoning system. I think that's...
In their mind, it's, it's a significant variation from where we are.
Oh, it's definitely a significant variation where we are.
It starts, it actually has a different sequencing of processes. So, in other words, you sort of know the, you start with what kind of houses you want, and then you go from there. So it's a, it's a different approach.
Let's throw one thing, if it... I may. You know, the difference between two developments there, El Caeo and the Privada, which was like ninety-eight, far down the center, and it would give us more consistency through a particular area. If it does that, then it's worth it. Because we have a lot of, a lot of contrast between those two developments.
That's good. Mayor, Vice Mayor, one of the things that we, you know, what, what you saw tonight were two developments that were handled by, basically, the people that are not going to be building the infrastructure, are not going to be building the houses. So, uh, usually, uh, most of the, most of the infra, uh, developments we've seen on the website, so what we're dealing with are zoning attorneys and land developers who are getting the entitlements of the land, setting the stage, plating the lots, and getting the zoning, and then they turn around and market the property to various builders based upon some niche in the market, whatever the market bears in terms of, i- is, is there a market for sixty-foot wide lots, or fifty-five, or seventy-five, do we want to do a gated community, what's our price point? And so they go out and peddle the property. So, I, you know, I, indifference to Dustin, I, I doubt if that would have worked in this particular case, because they don't know what houses they're gonna put on the market, they don't know the builder, and if, if they did, um, I think we would have seen house product tonight. We saw a nice-looking street sketch, we didn't see house product.
No, I agree. All right, I, I think what they're trying to say is they bring the home builder in the front end. They still develop, uh, but, I don't know. It sort of, uh, gave to me the difficulties that maybe we as a council would like to know about. Yeah? We need to know about it. This is something new that we'd better be able to explain to our citizens, I think, so...
Seems like if you brought the housing product in on the front end, you'd have a lot more, uh, knowledge. I thought it was, a lot of the debates that we have are often based in that.
Yeah, ours are, basically, you're, after the facts are driving everything. Yeah.
Okay, uh, any other questions of staff? We do want to say goodbye to Christine Romero, I guess, tonight, and, uh, we've enjoyed working with you, you've been a professional in every respect, Christine, and, uh, she's going to Sun, uh, West Core, and congratulations on a great job, and our best to you. Okay, which means adjourn.